Chair Privatalli. Dan, are you there by chance?
I'm sorry, Leslie, my microphone was on mute. I'm here. What can I do for you?
Yeah, for some reason I can't start my video. You know what's going on?
Oh, I think the host turned it off earlier.
I thought I am the host.
There you go.
Oh.
You made a.
I made you co-host, right?
Yes, and I think you might have turned your video off accidentally. So I turned it back on. Are you able to turn the video on now?
Nope. Oh, let's select another video camera. Oh, well.
I can see your video window pop up, but then it goes away real quickly. So it's trying.
It's trying and saying failure. Oh, well, I'll be slightly incognito tonight. And for everyone who is here, so I do not forget, I'm going to start the recording now.
Recording in progress.
Leslie, can you hear me okay?
I can. How are you, Chair Privatalli?
Good. Feel free to call me John.
John, I will stop during the meeting. Hello, Commissioner Havman.
Leslie, how are you?
Good. Commissioner Harris, good evening. I'll say it now, and I'm going to say it again a few times. My video is not working, so I apologize. And Vice Chair Saudi is, will not be attending this evening. Evening, Commissioner Mercado.
Hello, hi, everybody.
Hello.
Leslie, I'm ready when you are.
Okay, are you ready, Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Let me count you in first. Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, three, two, one.
Hello, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. This meeting is called to order. I'll request staff to call the role for commissioners who are present and not.
Yes, thank you, Chair Privatalli. And for the record, my video is not working, since you will just see my name tonight. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Havman.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
There.
Commissioner Samuzi.
Here.
Vice Chair Saudi is absent. And Chair Privatalli.
Here. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Order may only be changed by majority, but by the commissioners present, by the way. Hearing none. Moving on. Next, we'll move. The meeting will move. The meeting procedure staff will relay instructions on how to participate in tonight's virtual meeting. Leslie?
Yes, thank you, Chair Privatalli. At this time, thank you for having your camera off if you are not a commissioner. If you're participating by the web and wish to provide public comment when the chair opens the public comment period, please use the raise a hand icon at the bottom of the screen. If you are participating by telephone tonight and wish to provide comments, please press star nine when the chair opens the public comment meeting. Once you, when it's your turn and you phoned in, you use star six to unmute yourself, and I will repeat this. And you will have up to three minutes to speak. All public correspondence received by 3:00 PM today has been forwarded to the Planning Commission, and anything received afterwards will be included in the project record. Closed captioning is available for this meeting, and the link is on YouTube. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Leslie. Okay, let me now describe meeting procedures. We will begin with a staff report, then we will hear from the applicant. Applicants will have a maximum of 10 minutes to present. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. People on the conference call can speak when they receive the notification they have been asked to unmute themselves. Based on the number of participants here tonight, the public will have, I would say, this normal three minutes to speak. The commission will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We will close the meeting hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for comment or discussion and action if needed. All right, now to urgent communication. Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda may address the commission at this time. Leslie?
Yes, so if you'd like to speak on something not on the agenda, again, please use the raise a hand icon found at the bottom of your screen, or if you're phoning in, please dial star nine. And I see no one.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, minutes from the January 11th, 2022 Center for Planning Commission meeting. So this is, this item is the approval of the Center for Planning Commission meeting, minutes of January 11th, 2022. The recommended action is to approve as submitted. Leslie?
Yes, so if anyone has any comments on the consent calendar from the public and you wish to speak, please use the raise a hand icon or star nine if you're phoning in. And there's no one from the public that wishes to speak.
Okay. Are there any, any comments from the commission or edits? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Haven, I'll move to accept the minutes as submitted.
Okay, Commissioner Samuzi, second.
Excellent. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none. I'll ask Leslie to take a roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Havman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Mr. Samuzi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Saudi is absent, and Chair Privatalli.
Yes. Great, thank you. Excellent. We'll now move on to tonight's two action items. The first action item is 1007, 1020, and 1030 Northgate Drive, the Northgate Walk. And the action is to modify previously approved project to reduce the number of required affordable housing units from 28 to 14 in a 136-unit residential development. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Could I, could we receive the staff report, please?
Yeah, and before we go there, I would like to introduce Jeff Valentine. He is our new senior planner. So you will be seeing him a lot. We're very excited to have him. So this is the first, but not the last you will see of him. So Jeff, take it away.
All right, good evening, planning commissioners. For this application before you tonight is to modify the required number of affordable housing units from 28 to 14 units for a 136-unit residential development at 1007, 1020, and 1030 Northgate Drive that was previously approved by the Planning Commission on July 23rd of 2019. So almost two and a half years ago. The approved project would demolish an existing gas station and retail building at 1005 Northgate, as well as demolish a portion of an existing hotel at 1010 Northgate. And then three new 36-foot-tall residential buildings would then be constructed. The Planning Commission in 2019 approved an environmental design review permit for the entire project, as well as a use permit to allow remote parking for the hotel to be located in garages underneath two of the proposed residential structures, as well as a vesting tentative map to basically take two of the two existing parcels and reconfigure them into three parcels for the three residential buildings. So to step back, on March 1st of 2021, the City Council enacted ordinance 1990, and that lowered the city's affordable housing requirements with the intent of fostering the construction of actual projects instead of just entitlements. And that would both provide affordable units, but then also potentially pay into the Affordable Housing Fund, which could then be leveraged to create new affordable housing units. These changes are predicted to create more net new units overall. And then as part of these amendments, the City Council allowed projects that have received entitlements but yet not yet started construction, such as this one, to modify their approved affordable housing consistent with these, with ordinance 1990. And then also, these changes provide a lever for projects that are really experiencing increased costs, both for labor and construction. That was detailed a bit more in the, in the staff report. Some really quite, quite large increases for, for instance, lumber had over 300% increase, covered the period of COVID. And so by, by implementing this change with the reduced affordable housing permits, that helps hopefully make projects feasible that, that are no longer feasible due, due to these increased costs. And so again, the request of modification is to reduce the number of low-market rate units from 28 to 14 by providing 14 units at the low-income household level. This project will be providing 10% units, and this would then comply with the city's current requirements. With that, I'm available for questions, and the applicant team of Riley Hurd and Peter Stackpole are on the call and would like to provide a brief presentation as well.
Okay, great. I think the next order of business is to get the oral report from the applicant. I'm reading the script correctly. And then we'll ask questions. The commission can ask questions of the staff or the applicant.
Great, thank you, Chair, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. It's nice to see you again. My name is Riley Hurd. I'm here on behalf of the property owner. With me tonight is the project architect, Peter Stackpole. And we promised to be brief this evening, and Jeff actually touched on, you know, a lot of the points that were contained in our application. Just want to say a few brief comments. First and foremost, this application does not change the project structure in any way. There were a few comments, questions from the public. What is this? Is this new? No, we are not seeking to, to change the footprint height or, or density of the project in any way. It's simply the amount of below-market-rate housing. So why are we here? Some of you were involved in this project's incredibly lengthy history. It, it was an epic saga of five years of push and pull, redesign. And the outcome of that was a significant reduction in height by lopping off the top floor of every building, which of course reduced the unit count. But what didn't change was the plan to have subterranean parking underneath these structures, which is an incredibly costly endeavor, and really the only way you could make the housing work on a site like this where you're doing infill on a parking lot, and you also need to park the hotel. So we lost some of the economic engine up top, kept all the costs below. That's why you didn't see anything get built, even in one of the hottest housing markets out there. Probably an aside, but that's why we're moving to objective development standards, right? It is, the state was watching these, these sagas unfold. We had a lawsuit filed by the neighbors. That got resolved. You know, this is what it takes to, to develop. So costs, lumber, COVID, construction, delays. Even in the draft resolution before you tonight, you'll see strike-throughs on the sewer fees, the plumbing fees, the park fees. They've all gone up, and this project is still not built. It gets more expensive every single day. So my client would like to build it or sell it to someone who builds it. I did what Jeff did and reviewed the resolution from when the City Council went to 20 to 10, and they said, we want to encourage actual construction. And this one just doesn't pencil, and it's going to still be close at 10%. I, I am pleased to, to note that they're not doing the 5% of units and 5% fees. It's the full 10 that's going to be provided. So we ask that you approve this tonight and help us try to get this thing built. And we did want Peter Stackpole just to mention a few of the trends that are driving this request. Thank you.
Good evening. Peter Stackpole with LCA Architects. We are a firm in Walnut Creek. I'm the original architect for the project, followed it with Riley through its, its long history. On a positive note, I just want to mention that I've always thought this was one of the best sites that I've come across in my career for infill multifamily housing. It's in a great location. You know, access to amenities, retail, bicycle to, to the train station. It's just in a wonderful place to, to build housing like this. We've already gone over the, and Jeff has mentioned the, you know, the volatility of the COVID era construction costs that affect the viability of pretty much all projects. I'm just going to touch on a couple of particular things about this project that make it a little more challenging financially. It is an infill project, and like all infill projects, they tend to have site-related issues that make them a little more challenging. This one has your regular site geometry and some steep slopes. It's cut into several buildings rather than a single building. It has limited construction access and staging options. As Riley mentioned, it has an unusually high burden of below-grade concrete infrastructure that has to be paid for by the few units that sit on top of it. By the way, we had to, just as an aside, we had to replace all the hotel parking that these sites originally contained underneath the new buildings. We also have to accommodate an operating hotel through the entire construction process, which adds a lot of complexity. It has pretty low economies of scale at 136 units. It was really a shame that we lost that top floor. I think we lost 50 or more units when we had to take that off, and that would have pushed it up into a, a, a more economical range and an easier range to find favorable financing. The site, by the way, is zoned for 313 units, and we have, we're proposing 136 in the three buildings. So when you, when you look at all those issues, and then you add on a 20% affordable requirement, you've got an awful lot of flaming hoops to get through that add up to a, a pretty significant burden. We don't actually do many projects in 20%, in, in districts with 20% housing requirements just because developers rarely approach us to look at projects with that sort of burden. So it would be very helpful and, and increase the likelihood of getting this out of the ground if we could get some relief on that requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you, members of the commission. And the final comment is just, that's exactly what the council figured out. And I know that they interviewed developers, or at least members, I believe it was Paul Jensen, who sat with all different people, tradespeople, developers, and, you know, it was a bit of a counterintuitive decision to go from 20 to 10. But it, it just might work for this one. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you both, and thanks for your patience and tenacity. I think we're all looking forward to the project beginning construction. So at this time, we will, I will ask the commissioners if they have any questions for the staff or the applicant. Mr. Harris.
Thank you. I have a question. Jeff, you mentioned that reducing the number of affordable units would ultimately allow more contributions to an affordable housing fund? Or did I mishear that? Can you explain a little bit more about what you meant?
Yeah, so that was more in kind of, in a broader term of why the City Council adopted ordinance 1990. This project will not be providing in-lug funds, but what the, the new ordinance 1990 does is it requires a primary requirement of 5% of low-income units be provided onsite. And then there's a secondary requirement that can be addressed by, I think it's one out of like four ways. One of them is to provide 5%, another 5% of low-income units onsite. Another option is to provide in-lug fees, and I think there's other options with regards to providing land and those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, any more questions from the commissioners? I have a, I have a quick question on the 1990 ordinance. Is that, maybe Jeff or Leslie, is that limited term? Is that indefinite? Do you know?
That's a good question. To my knowledge, it's, it's indefinite, but it's a good question. I, maybe.
Oh, Ally's here.
It is indefinite, but we have Planning Director Judy C. here, so she can.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, the, the idea is that we would use this for a period of time to see if this is the thing that's going to inspire development because we were, we weren't getting, we were getting through entitlements, and we weren't seeing is anything happening beyond that. And so, you know, Riley mentioned the efforts that were made by Paul Jensen and others to try to figure out what it is, what was stalling projects. And this turned out to be one of the things, like, you know, we go through this process, you know, we, you know, we redesign, we go through, you know, different meetings that sometimes take multiple reviews. And then by the time you're done, you have this affordable housing requirement and the building permit fees, and all of these things start to add up. So we, you know, one of the things that came up, came out of that was reevaluating our affordable housing requirement. And, but not indefinitely, like, we're going to evaluate, provide the City Council with an update here soon in the next six months. And, and then, you know, in about three to five years, we're going to provide some more information that's data-driven and, you know, provide information on what to, what to do at that point.
Got it. And Jeff, did you know, was, did this project get any concessions? It sounds, it sounds like it didn't based off of the, the density on the site. But were there any concessions made or any benefits gained out of the affordable housing component of it? Do you know?
No, I think when it was first submitted, they, they were seeking some concessions for GNC bonus, but ultimately, since I think they, they lost the, that upper floor, they, they did not get any concessions for GNC bonus.
Got it. And maybe the applicant can answer, but I just want to make sure I'm hearing it right, that this, this project doesn't pencil with the existing affordable housing restriction. Basically, if it was as it was previously, pre-1990 ordinance, this wouldn't be able to be built?
That's, that's correct, and that's included discussions with potential purchasers and the owner, who is also a builder, who has explored every avenue. Just, it turns out that some of these approvals were really tantamount to denials because an approved project that doesn't pencil is pretty much a denied project. And so I think that was some of the thinking, and that's why we've seen the legislature react the way it has.
And my last question, where I'm just going through the conditions of approval, I see there's a lot of like markouts and stuff. Were there any other major changes, just to kind of highlight to the rest of the commission, that you want to point out?
Oh, yeah, good question. The only other significant change is just that essentially, this will be good if, if you all approve it tonight. This will be good for 18 months, and so that includes everything. That includes the change to the affordable housing requirements, and that includes all of the entitlements. And so if they do not get building permits issued in that time, they will have to come back and apply for an extension and basically come back before you all.
Okay, great. Any further comments from the commissioners or questions?
Yeah, just one, one clarification question. From, from the standpoint of determining whether the project pencils with this revised, this proposed revision of the number of affordable housing units, what are the other, what are the other uncertainties that exist between, you know, now and being able to, to determine whether or not it does pencil?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. The primary uncertainties are the extreme volatility in construction costs, ranging from labor to materials themselves. Also, in my experience, housing is cyclical, so where you find yourself in the cycle. I mean, we could predict that. We probably wouldn't be here tonight. I, I cannot, but, you know, we've had a heck of a run, but everything I'm reading says 22 and 23 stay strong. And then we see, we see what happens from there. I know there's, you know, a lot of pipeline projects. But to answer your question directly, it's construction costs and materials volatility and marketability.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, great. Any final questions from the commissioners? Now we'll move on to the public comment. Okay, seeing none. Let's open up the hearing to public comment. Leslie, could you take it over?
Yeah. Chair, are we giving three minutes or two minutes for public comment?
Three minutes.
And if you're wishing to speak on this item, please raise the hand, use the raise a hand icon, or if you're phoning in, please press star nine. And we have Kate Powers. And we have Kate Powers. You have three minutes?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I just had a couple of questions. I was under the impression that the project was not approved, but conditionally approved on July twenty-third, twenty nineteen, and I was wondering if there's any other conditions of approval that the project has already met other than what are in the staff report right now, if those, you know, I was just wondering what the conditions of approval are. And I was also, Jeff, you said that the law, or I guess Riley Heard said that the there was a lawsuit by the neighbors and that that got resolved, and I was wondering if someone could say how that was resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. If anyone else wishes to speak on this item, please use the raise the hand icon or star nine. And there is no one else.
Okay. And Leslie, does the, does the order of the agenda or whatnot allow for the applicant to address those questions?
It would be more appropriate if you asked the applicant those questions for, yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do that then. So Mr. Heard and Mr. Stockpole, you heard the questions from the member of the public just now. Could you please address them?
Yeah, sure. There is an incredibly extensive list of conditions of approval applicable to the project. I believe they number in the hundreds, yes. Looks like we're at a hundred and thirty-seven conditions of approval. Plus multiple other ongoing conditions, and I believe that that document is available from the city at any time. It's public record. The lawsuit, I did not handle personally, but my understanding was that it went to trial and a order was issued by a judge in favor of the property owner.
Good. Not to dwell on this too long, but do any members of the staff any, have any more information about the lawsuit?
I, I do not.
Oh. I can tell you what it was about, if that's what you're seeking, I'm just curious.
I, I think that was the question.
Oh, sorry, I thought the speaker asked how it resolved. The lawsuit was brought alleging a violation of CCNRs that govern the area. So a private contract between property owners. These were a very dated set of CCNRs that had certain land uses, prohibitions, et cetera, throughout them. Claims were made that the project was not allowed under those CCNRs, and the court disagreed.
I see. Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right.
Chair Privatelli, I must, I might have missed it, but I'm not sure you closed the public hearing.
Oh, I don't think I did. So I will now officially close the public hearing. Thanks for the reminder. All right. Okay, so the next order of the agenda is for me to ask if there are any follow-up questions from the commissioners. Calling on each, each of you, one by one. So we'll start with Commissioner Harris. Do you have any follow-up question?
None at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Havesman?
None at this time.
Mr. Mercado?
Yeah, I mean, I have a quick question on the options in the staff report. It says adopt resolution approving the requested height bonus. And then adopt resolution approving the requested, am I looking at the right one?
Uh, let's see here. There should just be a, a motion to adopt the resolution as proposed.
Looks like a typo.
I, I just wanted to confirm, yeah, that if it's maybe just from the old. It's probably from the original one, but I just want to make sure I'm not reading something incorrectly.
Right.
Because the resolution is fine, it's not, it doesn't talk about the height bonus. So I think it's probably from the original staff report. And the resolution's fine, because it's making the request. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything misaligning on my part.
Uh, yeah, you're correct. That's staff error. My apologies. Yeah, you're correct.
All good, man. Okay. Chair Prudential, is it just follow-up questions?
That's right.
Uh, that's it.
Do you have any more?
No, that's it.
Okay, great. Okay, excellent. Thanks. Okay, Commissioner Sumutti, any questions?
None for me.
Okay. Vice Chair Sadi is absent, and I have no further questions. So now I'll move on to asking if the staff has any additional comments or advice.
No additional comments.
Okay, and now I'll move on to asking the same question of the planning commission. Do the commissioners have any additional comments? And if not, I'll request a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll move to adopt the resolution as proposed by staff.
I hear a second.
Commissioner Havesman, I'll second the motion.
Sorry, that was Commissioner Sumutti that made the motion, sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
Oh, I do, I do, before we go.
Go ahead.
A roll call. I appreciate the applicant coming back. I remember this project. It was, it was complicated. It's a complicated site. There are a lot of issues with it, and I remember a few hearings on it. So I do appreciate the tenacity of coming back, and it seems like the city council and ordinance nineteen ninety is intending to help build, which is definitely needed. I think it'd be interesting if there was something that happened in terms of meetings between the city and folks. Maybe that'd be something that either be provided to us or sort of put out as some sort of just update, because I would like to know. Because what I see here, unfortunately, is that the affordable housing component of the project is kind of burying the brunt for the development. Really for factors that don't tie into it, from my opinion. So I can see that the, the city council wants that concession to happen, and it probably will enable these kind of projects to pencil. My feeling, though, is if this isn't durational, I don't see anything in the staff report that identifies how this isn't just general building and development issues. Cost of materials, changing the market conditions, financing issues, neighbor disputes, it just sounds like developing to me. And to me, I think there's just such a gap of affordable housing in the community that every project we get that's reduced, it may help the project build, and again, we don't want to kill it, but are we establishing a bad precedent? So I hope there's some limits set on this. Again, I appreciate the applicant coming back. I appreciate that they take that additional five percent. And I remember the original project greatly different after all the input and changes. But I just don't want to see a, a trend in our community that affordable housing is getting diminished under the caveat that it's the only way to build. So for me, I just wanted to kind of highlight that, the sort of, I guess, my soapbox moment of concern. But again, i- if the city council put it out there for a reason, then that makes sense. I hope we can get a little more information on that. And again, I just hope that there's some parameters established on this ordinance. That's it. Thanks.
I think Commissioner Mercado, I think that's a fair, it's a very fair point. I wonder, because I think the, the, the likely other side is that the reason why it's first on the chopping block is that it represents a substantial loss from a, from a financial perspective in terms of like the expected rents and, you know, knock-on effects, if you're, you know, looking at it from like a direct cap perspective, the knock-on effect on the actual value of the building as a result. So I think that's like the inherent financial challenge that exists. And I'm wondering, to further your point, parameters, maybe one route. There may be, I think we've already sort of established the in lieu development fee. And I'm think, I'm wondering whether it may be worth exploring that as an, as an, as a, more aggressively as a way of, as a way of balancing that potential sacrifice of affordable units in some development projects. I think the other challenges, you know, the applicant mentioned the number of conditions attached to development into the hundreds. And the fact that they're still going at it, you know, this many years in suggests that there's a real commitment to the community. I don't see many developers having that same level of commitment. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's, there's not a way that we can sort of, as you put it, sort of horse car trade, leveraging that sort of in lieu fee. And, you know, the end then is there's some other facility that's, that the city can work with to deploy that fee specifically for the acquisition of properties or whatever, you know, and to sort of help facilitate development in that other way, so that they're, you know, potentially financing for projects that are dedicated to affordable housing. That might be sort of an interesting thing for city council to, to kind of think about.
I think those are great comments. I agree with them. Excellent. Do the commissioners have any more comments? Okay, if not, since we don't have any more comments, Leslie, would you take a roll call?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Havesman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumutti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sadi is absent, and Chair Privatelli?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Design Review Advisory Committee, otherwise known as DRAC, one-year pilot program. So the resolution is recommending to the city council that they adopt an ordinance amending the zoning code to establish the Design Review Advisory Committee, the DRAC, and adoption of a resolution to establish a one-year DRAC pilot program. So the recommended action is to adopt the resolutions. And at this time, may I, may the commission receive a staff report, please?
Yeah, and if I can, I would like to introduce Jacob Noonan. I'm not sure he has been before the planning commission either. He is our new housing program manager. And we are super excited to have him. Also joining him, you know, Ally, Judy C., our planning director.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to meet all of you. We haven't had the opportunity to meet, except the, the chair. I met him on the housing working group. So I do have a presentation that I'd like to walk you through, so I'm loading that up now. So I think that the, the chair covered the item well and the, the subject matter. I would like to share with you a little bit of background. I think it's good for the commission and for the public this evening to recognize the genesis of this proposal. This began with reports to the city council back in, in two thousand and eighteen. And it was on August twentieth, exactly. It's a report on challenges and opportunities around housing, focusing in on the approval and the development process. As the commission is probably aware, there has been many changes in state law around and focused on streamlining and asking governments to reduce governmental constraints on projects as one way of reducing the costs and the cost burdens within the approval of, of, of housing. So it did, this conversation did begin in two thousand and eighteen. There was another report in two thousand and nineteen that identified eleven challenges, thirteen recommendations. The planning staff went out and held two workshops in the public on November third and nineteenth of two thousand and nineteen. And then returned to the city council with a recommendation and received direction from the city council to move forward with a number of amendments to the San Rafael Municipal Code, one of which focusing around DRB and the design process. Then on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, of course, shelter in place order happened, and a limited DRB subcommittee was formed that was essentially in line with the recommendations in the report. It wasn't exactly, but it was. And so for a while, that had been, that was, the sub could be, was, was functioning. On August eleventh of two thousand and twenty, the planning commission did receive a report on the possible amendments to the code. A DRAC, the, the DRAC being one of those that was discussed in that report, I believe. And then on September eighth, and then on September twenty-first, back-to-back meetings, the city council received reports again on the proposed amendments to the San Rafael Municipal Code. They did direct staff to move forward with three of those amendments, one of which the commission has been discussing this evening, which was the reduction in the in inclusionary housing requirement. And the fourth one was they directed staff to come forward with a, a pilot program, rather than a full program, but a pilot program on the design review, design review advisory commission, yeah, sorry, committee. So a little bit more on the background, since that period, staff has brought the idea of the DRAC to the DRB that brought that first on November fourth of two thousand and twenty. The DRB did provide some comments on the concept, and those concepts were used to develop the pilot program. That program was then brought back to DRB on February seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-one. And the DRB provided comment on the one-year pilot program. That is included in your staff report. That that meeting also is the genesis in the background for the exhibits that you see attached to staff's report to the, the commission this evening. Exhibit one is the resolution that the chair has mentioned. That is written currently in an affirmative manner with the commission, if the commission so chooses, to recommend the council adopt an amendment to the code, which is your exhibit number two. This is the draft amendment that essentially recognizes and creates the DRC and within the area of code that speaks to the DRB. And also creates the DRAC one-year pilot program, which is your exhibit three. There are two other exhibits. One is exhibit four, which is a flow chart that visually shows the process that would be established under DRC. And, and then there's a, a public comment letter. I should mention that two other public comments letters have been received since. I believe both have been forwarded to, forwarded to the commission. So a little bit about the Design Review Advisory Committee, the, the DRAC or DRC, commission, the composition. This would be, it would consist of two members and one alternative member. There is perhaps an option to have two alternatives. As one of the public comments that has been raised was a question, and it actually was a, a question that the DRB had, was if the two members, one is an architect and one is a landscape architect, if you have the landscape architect or the architect absent and your alternative is a landscape architect, do you have adequate coverage to comment? So perhaps the, the two alternatives is, is an approach that would satisfy that, that we'd have a, a architect and a landscape architect on the, the DRC and each one on as an alternative. The members would be selected from the sitting DRB. And members would serve for a one-year period. Now, there have been some comments that have been raised from the public about this, that there should be more of a turnover, and this was also brought up at the DRB. Staff's recommendation is for the Staff's recommendation is for the DRB members to sit for one year. Couple of reasons, one of which is so that they're able to become accustomed with the process. With the pilot, with the approach that, that's being recommended. And that they can then help to sort out any kinks or adjustments that we would be looking at in the. As the projects, the programs evaluated at the end of the one year. There is also some questions about how it would flow. If you have different members of the DRB commenting on the same project and is that a good thing or, or not? Through the pilot period approach, staff would, we would like to narrow as many variables as possible. And so that's why we're recommending that the members serve for the one-year term. Now, I, I'll, I'll flash this slide, which is a very simplified process flow for the review pathways. However, I, I would like to also then bring up the exhibit four. So very simply and quickly, once a project is deemed complete. It would either be, it would be sorted into two different buckets, one of which is minor. If it's minor physical improvements to the product, to the property as specified in the municipal code. It would be managed by a zoning administrator at that level of review. This is how these projects flow today. There would be an opportunity for the DRC to be consulted on those projects. Major physical improvements, which are also specified in the municipal code. Could take two different pathways, one of which would be the DRC review. Which is certainly, it's concurrently with the planning commission. And so it is in a public setting, in a public forum. There's a public notice. The public has the opportunity to participate. The difference between the process today and the process under the, the DRC. Is that it would be reducing essentially a meeting that the project would be able to come forward to the planning commission. The planning commission would receive information, input from the DRC members and an action could be taken. This would be limited only to residential new construction projects of up to 10 units. And residential projects of up to 40% new building area and three additional units. That's an important point on that second bullet is that's an existing project would be up to 40% of new building area for the existing. Built project and three additional units. Other projects that are larger in size would, would go to the, the full DRB for review as, as the process is today. There have been some public comments, we did receive some about looking at a smaller size. Cap in a lower residential density areas. Again, you know, staff, we are proposing this, this approach. A, so that we have a simplify, a, 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 a simple approach to work with in the pilot program. And there is capacity, if we have a controversial project that the, the direct, the community development director can refer that project to the full DRB. Okay, so at this, I, I will just quickly look at and recognize exhibit four for the commission members of the public. There is a flow chart attached in the staff report. I just bear, I, I basically covered it very briefly, but essentially at when the project's deemed complete. This is the split where minor projects would take the route through the zoning administrator review. And then a project that would, is a major would then be split between following a DRAC review. Could be the, again, the direct line through the public, the planning commission as the public hearing. Through the decision on the project. And then the projects that are larger than allowed under the DRAC review would be. Moved through the standard DRB process that has the two DRC meeting and then a planning commission meeting. Evaluating the pilot program, again, this is a one-year project. There would be a report at the end of that one year to the city council. And the evaluation would be based on the effectiveness of reducing process and timing. While maintaining Design Review Board program expectations. Now, we did, I have mentioned that we have received public comments. I will cover those public comments briefly and then I believe that Director Judasee will also assist me in, in some of those. We have received three comment letters, one from Responsible Growth Marin. And then two letters from the Hillside Group. The focus of these, the, the, the comments were around the hillside and size of projects for lower density neighborhoods. There were some questions around the review authority in the hillside, which Director Judasee will, will assist me with following my comments. And then the question that I had already addressed is whether the projects, a, a 10-unit size limit should be reduced in lower density areas. There was some questions around evaluation. How would the project, the, the pilot program be evaluated? And the composition and whether there should be additional alternates, which I have also covered in the report. There were questions around the public notice and public notices would be given and addressed for the DRC. Concurrently with the planning commission. The referral to the DRB, this is something that would be worked out within the pilot program itself. The director can refer, I believe that also a member of the DRC could refer the project to the full DRB. And then there were a number of items raised by the DRB that also will be worked out in the pilot. One of which did recognize a question about the. Increased workload for DRB members and if that's going to be a concern or not. I, I think that that's something that certainly will be evaluated at the end of the one year. And then there was a comment from the, the community around specifying that the pilot program description, that is your exhibit three. Perhaps that could include that projects would be clearly identified as either being reviewed by the DRC or by the DRB. And I, I think that that's a fair request and we could, staff could certainly add that language into the exhibit three. There were also some comments around the DRB subcommittee and the use of the subcommittee during the shelter in place order. And that, those comments in that letter have already been addressed by the city attorney. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the director, Director Judasee, if she had any comments to. Include on hillsides and hillside review.
Yes, so just to kind of elaborate a little bit on the question about the prior subcommittee. That was formed during the COVID, response to COVID. One of the comment letters that you received describes that process. And it's a letter similar to a letter that the city has received previously. The city attorney did respond to that letter. And had this letter that was recently reviewed has been referred to the city attorney's office for their review. So that will be addressed separately. The subcommittee process and structure that we're talking about tonight is not that same structure. It's not the same. One, this is a different structure. It's a Design Review Advisory Committee structure that would participate in a public. Hearing that would be noticed. They would be, they would serve as an advisory body. And the planning commission would still have decision-making authority. And, and then in terms of, you know, referring a project up. To the full board, it would be again, the Design Review Board making a recommendation and the planning commission making a decision to. Refer the, refer to the full board. However, if there's a. Input the planning commission would like to provide on that, we would definitely welcome that. Just in terms of the projects that are subject to review, what staff did is we took the projects that are already subject to Design Review Board approval. Sorry, Design Review Board recommendation. And only those. So there was a, one of the comments was asking that. In the DRAC that we exclude. Projects that have hillside that are located on hillside lots. Those projects are not listed as major projects under our environmental design review process. So they would, we would continue to process those the way we do now and those are typically through zoning administrator review. I'm in cases where there's an interest in receiving DRAC consultation, we would do the same thing that we do now. We often do have situations where we, you know, need the DRB to weigh in. We would, we would seek the same type of input now. And through this process, we would seek the same type of consultation through the DRAC. And the zoning administrator hearings are noticed. So they would continue to be noticed. And the public would be able to participate as they currently are able to. Let's see, just want to make sure there were any other comments. I think that pretty much addresses the comment letters that were submitted and happy to answer any questions that your commission has.
And just to conclude the presentation then, final slide is the recommendation that is included in staff's report. And that is to adopt the resolution recommended to the city council that. To adopt a zoning code amendment establishing the DRC. As a subcommittee of the full Design Review Board and to establish the one-year DRC pilot program. This concludes my report.
Hey, great. Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff?
I have a. I've been hogging the mic, man. Go ahead, Commissioner Haidman.
Okay, so a couple of questions. And one, I, I, could you speak a little bit more to the evaluation process? Will that be done internal? Will somebody from external be brought in? Is there any sort of a process in mind at this point?
At this point, we've contemplated an internal review and, but inviting the DRB, the planning commission. To be a part of that review and, and then to forward the comments and the review to the city council for their full consideration. To, you know, as, as options to continue the program, to continue it, but amend it. Or ultimately, if it does not work, then we, and, and if, if everyone's in agreement, then to discontinue the program.
So it would be a process where the planning commission could weigh in on a draft of the evaluation before it goes to city council?
Absolutely. And I think it's important that the planning commission and, and DRB both have input. And, and your thoughts are important in whether this is working or not. You know, the state has made many changes and I think that we've included some other changes that we're, need to work on in the next steps. Because certain projects also are, you know, the, the reality is that they're going to be limited to five meetings. And so we, we do need to balance the amount of review that a project is subject to with the requirements and the limitations that are provided to us by the state. And to do it in a way that, that meets expectations.
Sounds very good. Thank you. I'm lucky. Just two more quick questions, I think. One is that, that the issue of hillside construction was raised. Are there other types of construction, construction in a flood zone? That should, that should be acknowledged. My suspicion is that if, if there are projects that are that complicated, they would be referred up to the full Design Review Board. Does that sound right?
Yeah, the, yes, the, 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 the major project improvements is, is very specific. And, and it, it covers a wide range of, of projects that do fall within that category. I'm not certain if a project just in and of itself being in a flood plain, I don't believe that that would, would refer the project up to the DRB. However, based on the magnitude and the size of the project, it, it certainly could be a, that level of, of review.
That would be at the discretion of the, of the DRAC. If they felt that this was so important and so complicated that it deserves full designer view, that, that would be one instance where it would be referred up.
Yes, and I believe perhaps the director can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I believe that the DRAC and, and the planning commission would refer to the full DRB.
Yeah, and you know, just if I can add, there are situations that we, where we have, because projects are in the flood zone, they have. They request additional height. And so depending on what that project looks like, it may be that we need to go through a different process anyway. What, what we're envisioning is projects that only have a environmental and designer view process. This doesn't, so you know, projects that require zoning code amendment or general plan amendments, those are. You know, specific projects that are going to change an existing land use. And so for those types of projects, we would expect that the DRB, the full DRB would weigh in. And similarly, you know, if it's a, in a flood zone and it happens to be, to be raised, it may require variance or some other type of review. That we would want to have the DRB, the full DRB, we may want to have the full DRB weigh in.
Finally, is, is there any way in which this would lead to less transparency of a project moving through the process?
No, the idea is that we would have a publicly noticed hearing with the planning commission. So it would be, you know, the same, you would, the public would be able to see what's being heard. They would be able to participate and comment both prior to the meeting and at the hearing. So there would be, it would be a very transparent process.
Thanks very much.
I have kind of more. Yeah, thank you. I had a kind of more of a nuts and bolts kind of question. So imagining the pilot program is implemented. And we have the DRAC show up at the PC hearing because it meets the, the flow chart criteria. How do we envision the meeting process? Cause I've always felt like DRB kind of checks under the hood and does all of that to really hit those design things that us here may not have the sophistication. And so if those come up during the, is it, and maybe we're not there yet. But is there sort of an idea of procedurally or administratively, how you envision this, these kind of meetings happening?
Yes, there would definitely need to be an update to the rules and procedures, planning commission's rules and procedures. But just kind of conceptually, the way it would be, it was envisioned is that the, the Design Review Board would weigh in on design matters. And provide that same level of advice and recommendation. And then subsequent to that, then the planning commission would be evaluating the project on its merits. And then make that decision. So the planning commission would still be making the decision, the Design Review Board would be providing comments and recommendations. But they would not be part of the actual action.
And so all of that would be sort of, they lay out their comments, then it's reviewed. Okay. Sorry to be a stickler. I'm just. Procedurally, it seems a little confusing for me to get my head wrapped around it. I really like this idea because A, you have statutory issues from the state on, you know, less than six meetings or five meetings. And I think for many of the applicants are usually frustrated about the amount of meetings. I appreciate that. I'm just making sure I kind of get my head wrapped around in the guidance we're going to give the, the council, just how that would happen. You know, I'm envisioning DRAC provides some comments that maybe change a lot and have wrinkles in terms of what the ultimate approval may look like. So do we envision there may be a lot of kind of on-the-spot changes happening or? About that?
So I, I perhaps think about it in terms of the flow. Typically, the commission receives a report from, from staff and then you would receive a presentation from the applicant. And after that, you may perhaps either you would have public comment or you would have your. Recommendations, comments from the DRAC, then public comment. And then the commissioners would have your questions and then deliberation, deliberation. Perhaps the one thing that we will need to really work out is when a project needs to come back. Or when and how it's conditioned to move forward. It's an important note in the five meetings that we do need to reserve one for the city council in case of projects appealed. And if a project has a pre-application meeting, that could count as a, as a, as a meeting. And so it really starts to narrow the meetings down. You know, if you could recognize there's three meetings left. So if we can sort out ways where we can move projects through and have them conditioned. I think that that might be a, a nice approach. However, I think that we're going to really need to work that out. And Director Judasee might have some other thoughts to add on to this.
Oh, that, that's great, Jacob. I think that you said exactly what I was thinking.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more questions from the commissioners? I have a couple of questions. No one else has anymore. Okay, great. My first question is, how would the the two architects, I guess, the one landscape and the one building architect be selected out of the design review board? And how would the two alternates be selected? And my con- the context of this question is, you know, imagine that different members of the designer review board have different design philosophies and aesthetic tastes and whatnot.
I believe that the members of the D R A C would be selected by the D R B.
Okay. Great. And then this next question actually was raised by responsible growth Marine. Oh, sorry. Yeah, responsible growth in Marine. And it's just about the relative size of a development and whether or not it would go to D R B versus the D R A C. The example is that, you know, a ten unit development in a dense neighborhood is not a large development, but a ten unit development in a very a less dense, sparsely built out neighborhood is a large development. Is there any consideration for relative size?
Right. So as I had, we did look at this and I know that the D R B also looked at it and the same questions had come up when the D R B looked at at the at sizing the the split. And for one thing, in this, the lower density neighborhoods, I'm not sure if we would see a ten unit project, for instance, in the single family neighborhoods or in in areas where you have the the very low density development because it just wouldn't be allowable under zoning. There is there's also an interest, I think, that when we set this one metric to try to limit the number of variables in the pilot program. So that we have, we can come forward with somewhat of a simplistic approach. So that we can see if it it's working. There's nothing that suggests that we cannot adjust or change or modify. And again, if you had a ten unit project that is coming forward, let's just hypothetically say a a, you know, a project that is less than a ten units, but is more than four, and it just has a level of controversy with it. Again, that project can be referred to the full D R B.
Okay, and that would be by a member of the the D R A C?
Yes, by. And then it would, it would be, it would be confirmed by the planning commission.
Okay, okay. And then my last question, and this question is maybe kind of remedial in nature, so I apologize. But is is there anything, you know, about the pilot that would somehow reduce the effectiveness of the design guidelines or constraints that we already have? Like, for instance, I live in, you know, one of the Iqua neighborhoods and just wondering, is there anything that, and then we have the downtown precise plan that has architectural requirements. Is there anything that you could foresee that would somehow allow the pilot program to reduce the effectiveness of those those rules?
No, no, none of the rules would be changed or altered in any way.
Okay, I have no more questions. So just calling on the commissioners one one last time. Does anybody else have any more questions? Hey, seeing none. Okay, let's open the meeting up for public comment then. Leslie, would you take over?
Yeah, yeah. You wish to speak on this item, please use the raise a hand icon. And if you're phoning in, please press star nine. And our first speaker is Kate Powers. Kate, you have three minutes.
Thank you again, commissioners. I have a couple of questions. One is not, I don't understand how the merits of the project would be reviewed in a public setting if the if the D R A C sits with the planning commissioners as they review the project or if they review in private and then their recommendations become part of the public record that is part of the staff report that goes to the planning commission. My experience in the past has been that the merits of the project are are part of the public hearing. That happens at the designer review board and that the how the project meets sequo or planning policies and programs and and zoning regulations in the city is decided by the planning commission. And then my other, and so I'm wondering how that, how the merits of the project work. And then the other question I had is, um, is there a public, going to be a public hearing on the objective design and development standards? A lot of the cities and towns and the county have been working with Optico on developing those and what I understand is that a a city or a town that does not have those standards, they're still required to review and act on a project, but through a ministerial process as opposed to evaluating the merits of the project without any local guidance with those design standards. And so trying to understand in terms of a member of the public, how the merits of a project through this arrangement with D R A C and no, to my understanding, no design and development standards. And then how does the public engage with with that part of of the of the public process in a in evaluating a project? Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Next up is phone number ending in two nine nine five. I have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Victoria DeWitt. I have some questions about how this gets referred to the full D R B. I heard some say that D R A C refers. I heard Jacob say that the community development director can refer. I heard that the planning commission can refer. I think there should be an option for a member of the public to request for a controversial project. And if the planning commission refers, how's, how does that work? Does that work at the planning commission hearing? Or does it happen behind closed doors? What, how does that work? Because normally the full D R B meets before the planning commission. Another question is, is at the combined meeting, if there's some outstanding issues that need to be brought back for further review, how does that work? Is that another combined meeting or separate meeting? And then staff estimates a minimum processing savings of two months with a median processing time savings of three to four months. How is that that calculated? Are you eliminating delays caused by the applicant? And it's important to know how you calculate that so that when you go to review the D R A C in a year, you can use the same standard to calculate the time savings. And hillside projects, if a hillside project is with a within a hundred feet of a ridgeline, isn't that a major design review under fourteen twenty five oh four oh A one A? So part of hillsides are subject to major according to how I read the municipal code. And I do think that hillside projects with exceptions, with nonconforming lots, with lot line adjustments, with more than one project, I think those all should go to the full board. And I don't understand the difference between planning, talking about a D R A C being consulted by the zoning administrator versus D R A C being concurrent with the planning commission. What what does that mean consulted? Does the, will the D R A C attend the zoning administrative meeting as well with the public? And then the combined D R A C and P C will result in a ten member board. That's a large board. And I think there's a possibility of less transparency to the public because of limited time for individual board members to present their analysis and viewpoints and less overall time for board discussion because it could end up being a long meeting. And I I think I think that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Next up is Shirley Fisher. Shirley, you have three minutes.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you. Can you hear me clearly? Good. Didn't, that didn't work last time. I, first of all, I want to say that I'm pleased to see some of the changes that have been incorporated in the pilot project from previous input from both the designer review board members and the public. I have four or five questions that I still and issues that I would still like you to think about and address. Some of them have already been addressed by other speakers. First of all, the project eligibility. I was at a meeting where we were told that that any of the projects that were eligible for D R A C would have to be in a hot area zone for high density. I didn't, don't see this in the municipal code. Is this true? Could this please be clarified what what that means? Second thing, the composition of the D R A C. I support the two alternate, two alternates method because it seems to me that the alternate should have the same qualifications as the missing member. So if you're missing a landscape architect, you should get a landscape architect in in substitution. The third thing is the, what I think is really most important, which is the process and criteria for evaluating this project. I don't know if it needs to be specified in the actual code, but I think it definitely needs to be spelled out and discussed by the commission before the project actually starts. I don't think speed of processing is the only parameter that should be discussed and 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 looked at. I think there, that's supposedly a benefit to the applicant. I think we should look at the benefits to the city as well as the cost to the city. Is there more staff time or less staff time involved? Is there also the effect on the direct design review board itself? The design review board in San Rafael has been a really important institution. It's had a lot of stability. It's functioned very well. I think that you will need to see is, are some members being overutilized, some being underutilized? What do the design review board members actually think about the project? I'm glad to hear they'll be included in the evaluation. I think also need to look at the end results in terms of the design comments that are put out. Second, section E does not specify how the, this has been brought up before, does not specify who and how a project would be referred to the full D R B. I think this really needs to be specified. And again, the the ability for requests from the public to be included as a process. And then the last thing in the flow chart, and it's been mentioned before, just could you clarify for me, what is the public noticing process for zoning administer administration hearing? I've never seen that. I would like to know how that works. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shirley. There's anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen or star nine. And it looks like there are no more speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you. So now we will move on to I will close the public hearing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah, and we will move on to any follow up questions to staff from the commissioners and all. I'm just do around rather the approach here. Commissioner Harris, any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Havenman?
Apologies, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mercado?
Just questions?
Yeah, just questions right now.
No.
Good. Commissioner Sumitzi?
No questions.
Commissioner Sade is away. I have a question. I guess we just heard a a lot of questions from the public. What's the best way to address these questions? Should we try to hit them all tonight or should we reply in writing?
I think that would be good to touch on the questions. I think there are some really great questions and Jacob, do you want to start and then I can just add?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. So I was taking a lot of notes. So I'll just, I'll try to go down the list. I believe that there were some questions around how would the merits of the project be reviewed in the public setting? Again, the project would be reviewed with the planning commission. This is a publicly noticed meeting. It would be open to the public. The public would be participating in the process. One thing that we may discover in the pilot is that it might mean that the hearings are longer because you would have the members of the D R A C providing their input and comment to the planning commissioners the staff report, the applicant's presentation and deliberation. I'll I'll refer to the director on how the projects are referred to the full D R B. But let me say that, and then the the project merits and and timing. I don't believe it's fair to see that it says a a ten member board. Of course, certainly, the planning commission does not change and neither does the D R B. What happens is you have two members as a subcommittee joining you from the D R B. So they are not voting members of of your body and they don't participate in the deliberation. They would be providing recommendations as the D R B does now to the planning commission. It would just be that they're providing recommendation in the hearing with you, prior to you deliberating and making a decision. Let's see, I I think.
I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt. Leslie, would you mind going on mute? We're getting some feedback. No worries.
Thank you. Happens to me now and then, too. Let's see, the other, I I think that we saw that there is some interest in the the two alternatives. And I think that that's something that that's definitely manageable and that that can be incorporated. And then around the evaluation of the pilot program, certainly, it's not just timing. But it would be an evaluation of how has D R's D R A C continued to meet the design program that the program of the D R B while also meeting your commission's program and creating the project streamlining and and other benefits that we would like to explore that the council has asked us to look at in this this pilot program. Director, would you like to cover, I think that I left the zoning the the zoning administrator process and how the projects are referred to the full D R B?
Sure. And just to expand on the criteria for evaluating would be the same. This, the designer review advisory committee would continue to be an advisory group. So there would be no change. The planning commission would still have decision making authority. Currently, the D R B is an advisory group. They don't make decisions. They make recommendations. And so the criteria that we use to help the D R B make it, make a recommendation would be the same in this forum. In terms of the noticing for the zoning administrator level reviews, we currently provide notification, the same type of notification that we do for planning commission. Same exact look, same exact card. It only, the minor difference is that it says zoning administrator instead of planning commission on the form. So that would continue to occur. In terms of eligibility for projects, Jacob touched on it. These projects would be referred to the D R A C combination planning commission only if they already are eligible as a high density residential land use. This wouldn't apply to projects that are, that would require a rezone or general plan amendment. It wouldn't apply to projects that are requesting special exceptions like a hillside hillside overlay exception is one of the comments that was suggested by one of the commenters that we should not be moving those forward without the that we should not be moving those forward without the full DRB. I'm in agreement on that. Those typically go to the City Council, and the City Council would likely expect a full DRB recommendation on those. And then, there was a comment about where we are with development standards, just so your commission knows. You know, we've been, we started working on these. We suddenly were thrown into this pandemic, and we lost a number of staff. And so our, you know, time and effort was focused on processing applications. And, but as you see, we have Jacob now, and we have Jeff Valentine and Leslie Mendez. And these are some excellent staff. And so those objective standards will be coming to the Designer Reviews Board soon, and then to your Planning Commission and City Council. And let's see, I think I touched everything. Jacob, was there anything I missed on here?
I, maybe there's one thing that we haven't covered yet, and that is the, a way that the public could be involved in the project and in the referral of the project to the full DRB. Again, the projects will be reviewed in the public setting, and members of the public could certainly petition to the, in the public meeting as part of their comments, that the Planning Commission and the members of the DRC do that referral to the full DRB.
That's correct. And if you would leave it to the Planning Commission with a recommendation by the Designer Review Board to do that, we wouldn't want to just have a one specific member of the public have that authority to refer something over to the, to a different board. It would be really needing to be coming from the Planning Commission with a recommendation by the DRAC or by the director.
I think that, I think we covered it.
Okay, okay, understood. I just have one other question about who has the power to recommend to the DRB? Is it just members of the Planning Commission and the DRB or DRAC? And if it's, if it's the DRB, is it the larger DRB? You know, in addition to the DRAC members? And also, can staff recommend a project go to the DRB?
The thought is that it would be, you know, if a project comes to the Planning Commission, that is a combined Planning Commission, Designer Review Advisory Commission, committee, that the committee would, you know, if they were feeling like this needed a full board review, that at that point, they could recommend that it be referred to the full board and your Planning Commission then would have the ability to say, yes, well, we're going to request DRB consideration. Separately, if we were already feeling like, and this happens currently, we have projects that don't require Designer Review Board review, but we feel because of the design concept or the level of public participation, that having a review by a public body might, would be beneficial. So the director will refer these types of projects to the DRB already, even though they don't currently require that. So it would be the same concept where, you know, the director would be able to do that prior to the meeting, or if they came to the Planning Commission DRAC combination meeting, that the DRAC would have the ability to say, this is really requiring a, you know, kind of a greater number of board members to participate.
Okay, great, thank you. I think there was just one other question and topic raised, and apologies if you covered it and I missed it, but it was just elaborating on the calculation of the two-month delay that you think will be saved. Could you explain how that two-month estimate came to be?
Yeah, it, so we are obligated to provide at least 15-day notification. So once the DRB hearing is held, we have to send out a notification. Typically, that doesn't get done within that week. So there may be a, you know, staff workload delay of about two weeks in that timeframe. And then, we need to schedule it to a meeting that's available. So if, within that timeframe, you know, the 20-day, you're talking about 15 to 20 days to get you to a Planning Commission review, that Planning Commission may not be available. It may be full, or, you know, there may be other, you know, some other circumstances that could go from happening than, you know, within a shorter timeframe. So typically, it's about a two-month timeframe. There may be opportunity to reduce that, but that's what we normally see about a two-month between the two hearings.
Okay. Great, thank you for that. That's a very comprehensive response. I believe that's sufficient. So now, we, as a commission, should discuss this. So feel free to raise your hands or just chime in with any discussion on this matter. Do we have any discussion?
I appreciate staff putting all this together. This is complicated. This is hard to try to meet the streamlining requirements that are being imposed. I also support this, but I'm pretty reserved about it, just to be honest. I think it's going to create potentially a little, I'm concerned there can be a little bit of extended PC meetings if we get into a lot of the design issues, and a little bit of a confusion from kind of the authority at the meeting to not undermine the PC or the DRB's role. From my experience, when you get these sort of advisory kind of ad-hocs that start happening, they, it can lead to a lot of Q and A and just back and forth amongst it that may be good for public debate and may be good to show the process, but that's a bit of a risk. I'm also a little bit concerned that the goal of this actually won't happen, that will end up erring on the side of conservative and saying, this should go to the DRB, and we just lost a hearing. So then, I'm thinking as a commission, we should really think about, how could we, how could we condition these projects to mitigate that? Or what could be done? Or could it go to the DRB so then that they can, in essence, see what we're recommending and kind of have a preapproval? So again, I just don't want the streamlining goal to backfire, because we get into the weeds with the DRB or the DRAC on certain issues, especially if there's community issues on it, which, again, I don't know where these kind of projects may land. But, you know, if there's a lot of constituency questions on it, we may not, I don't know how the DRAC numbers will be. So that's sort of a little bit of a red flag for me. And then the other one is just, you know, the DRB workload, just being very conscious of, if you're a DRB member and you're rotating and you're doing this as well, I think it's just asking a lot. Which, again, you know, we signed up for it. So I appreciate, it'll be great to have their insight, but I am a little bit concerned. I just don't want to see any burnout on it. But I mean, props to you guys. I think it's a really great idea. And I totally support this being a pilot program. I'm really into, after the one year, having an honest discussion and assessment as to how it went. Because ultimately, I'm hoping it helps staff as well, and the project applicants advance this. Doesn't sound like there's any impact on public input. And in fact, a global meeting may be better for the public, because we think they can really see us putting it together. But I am, I would just highlight, you know, the importance of a check-in when this one-year period or whatever it may be comes in. That's it.
Yeah, I agree. Is it okay for me to ask one more question based on your comments, Commissioner Mercado? Did, Ellen, Jacob, do we have a sense of how many projects, you know, we as the Planning Commission will see with the DRAC? Rough estimate?
Yeah, just some, just quick thoughts. I don't have a rough estimate myself. Perhaps the director does. But again, these projects are limited to 10 units or less residential, if they're new. And then it is projects that are three to 10 units existing that expand less than 40% and add three additional units to them. So I think that the scope is fairly limited.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. I don't have a whole lot to add to that, other than, you know, it's always hard to say what you're going to expect in the coming year. I mean, we have some projects that we kind of, you know, applicants start to speculate and start to ask questions, and we, we think we know what's coming. And when we see nothing, and sometimes we hear nothing, and suddenly we get an application, you know, and we're kind of surprised. So it's really hard to say. But like Jacob said, we try to narrow it so that it really does, it really is a pilot that will allow us to evaluate and not really open up the doors completely. So it's definitely focused.
Okay, great, thank you. Any more thoughts that the Commissioners would like to share or discussion? If seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Mercado. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as submitted.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Harris, I second that motion.
Thank you. Leslie, could you take a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
Yes. Commissioner Havenman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumitzi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sade is absent, and Chair Privatelli?
Yes.
There you go, unanimously passes.
Thank you very much. All right, excellent. Well, now we'll move on to the director's report. Leslie, could you give us the report, please?
Yeah, the apologies that this one is a repeat from last time, but on February 7th, the Los Gomos project that you saw and recommended approval of on December 14th will be going to City Council. So if you're interested in attending, that will be on Monday, February 7th. And Planning Commission has only one meeting in February. So your next meeting will be February 15th. And currently, we only have one item on the agenda, which is an update to the housing element. So that should be interesting and informational. And we will be seeing Jacob Noonan again, and probably Ally and Barry Miller, who also was the lead planner on the general plan update, as well as the downtown precise plan. And that is what I have for you.
Go on, thank you. Go ahead, Leslie, if you have anything more.
Oh, I was just wondering if you guys had any questions for me?
Any questions? No? Okay, great. So now, do any Planning Commissioners have any communication or comments they'd like to make to the commission? No? I'll just mention quickly that we did have our second meeting of the housing element. So it seems like it's going very well. It's too soon to really provide any, I would say, material updates, because we're still almost in, I think it's fair to say we're still in brainstorming mode. And we were given a long list of reading material, over 60 documents, and also a few podcasts and whatnot, which I found incredibly beneficial. So it's becoming an extremely fertile ground for, I think, some really good ideas. I mean, we're seeing the same sort of concerns about overdevelopment and whatnot, that affordable housing and diversifying the communities is really becoming very, I would say, a focus of the housing only group. So really happy to see that. All right, well, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.